All right, with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to add another warrant, Cemetery Fund Number Three. So we have the notice of June 14th.
I move with approval today, since June 14th.
Second there. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have Warrants Twenty-Six, the Payroll Twenty-Six P, and the Cemetery Fund Number Three.
I make the motion that we approve Twenty-Six, Twenty-Six P, and Cemetery Number Three.
Okay, any discussion? Warrant Number Twenty-Six is for fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. And our half was ARPA funds going towards cleaning up and insulating the attic of Farm Office. The legal costs from repairing the damage from the lightning strike, how garage, highway supplies, repair, payroll transfers, and fuel, among some of the highlights. Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to ARPA funding. Dummerston Confessional Church, are you ready or would you like to wait?
You don't want to hear me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't hearing you.
Okay.
If you sat in the back, you probably would've heard it.
Given you the documents we have compiled from our church, and just a little history on it, we've talked to the school. Schools used our tent for the last couple of years when they were having problems and they needed some more space. I think when we got the tent, it made it possible for the Grange to have a craft fair and for the fire department to have a breakfast. So I think there's a lot of things that we've done that help the community. Going forward, the standard is a little bit smaller than the one we had. The one we had was forty by sixty. This one is going to be thirty by fifty, so it'll fit in our space a little better on the side of the church. We've got all the details on the last page. They have what it'll cost. We got a ten percent discount because we are a church. And with the shipping, it's going to cost a little bit ninety-five hundred dollars. That's what we're asking for from the ARPA funds, if possible. I can answer questions if there's anything you would like more to know.
One question I have for you is, when you let the school use the tent, did you ask for a donation or anybody else using the tent?
No.
I guess one of my things is, in the future, if you get this, would you like to come up and sit in here?
Thank you.
In the future, will you ask for donations? And my question before you say yes or no to that is, I think what you've got to do is look into the future. These tents are going to wear out. If you don't ask for it, ARPA money's going to be gone away. So if somebody asks to use it, to ask for a donation, and just put that into a tent fund, so down the road, you'll have money to replace the tent.
Yeah, it's a definite possibility. One of the things that we have to look going forward for, it takes between six and ten men to put the tent up. And we don't have a whole lot of help. So we were really thinking that we would offer it mostly for the town, if the town wanted to do something. Individually, we would have to talk about it because we have to make sure we have enough men to put it up.
I don't know if I see it as a private fund or disaster.
Or not even disaster. Well, I'm saying the school used it. The school, I mean, to me, the district should have been donating money towards it. If not...
Well, it was something they needed right away, and we said, "We've got it."
Oh, exactly. I understand that part, but I'm just saying that I myself feel like the school should have offered a donation. You know, anybody should offer a donation. I'm not saying individuals. I'm saying like the Grange, if they want, you know, need to use it. It's not hard to give a donation.
Green Mountain Camp did give us some.
Okay, see, that's one... Do you know when the current tent was bought? How long, what's the lifetime of one of these tents?
I can't really tell you when it was bought, but it was bought by the fire department. And I would say it had to be probably in the seventies. Because I became a fireman in the eighties, and I was part of the crew that put it up. We had two of them. One of them got pretty bad and was just destroyed. The second one, about ten years ago, it was given to the church.
I thought it was like the nineties.
Nineties, okay. Was it really? Okay. So we've had it a lot longer. It's got a trailer, and we can use the trailer with the new tent. It's... We've looked into the possibilities for trying to do our Apple Pie Festival, but there's so many component parts to it, we don't think we can really do it without a tent. Because if the weather is so unpredictable, if we don't have a tent, we just wouldn't be able to do it.
What are you going to do with the old tent? When you get to know it?
It was given to the Green Mountain Camp with the understanding that we can't be responsible for any problems. It's gone. If it makes it through this summer, I think it's going to be... It has a lot of pinholes and how to replace some of the ropes already. It's just, I think it's...
One of the poles broke last year.
Yeah, one of the poles broke. So it's... We didn't want to take a chance with the little public. You know, we had five or six thousand people come under the tent during Apple Pie, and we didn't want to have any problems with it. And they just needed something right away because they're going to build a building, a new building over the camp, so that they had the extra space. But it wasn't going to be ready this year, so they have it.
Where do you store it?
Wherever we can. It's been in...
But undercover?
Oh, yeah. We have a tarp that goes over. For the last few years, we've been storing it in the woodcots as well. But since they're doing renovating, we're going to have to find someplace else. But we will.
Was it ginsy bunkers for a while?
Yeah, right, it was a ginsy bunker.
Or a garage.
So we, Carrie Chapman, had written to, who was it, Katie?
Yes.
And the email came back from her. And when that email came back, I was like, "Okay, it sounds like this is something that, you know, the ARPA funds could be used for."
Is Katie the overseer?
She's the state coordinator.
And then two, two days later, I think it was on February 8th, I think somebody sent you an email, correct? And saying, "Don't do it with churches." So, you know, with ARPA funds. And I don't, I'm sorry that that email was out there, right? Yeah, it was on February 8th, I believe. And so that, so, I mean, it was conflicting uses and, you know, ways of doing it. So when I read the first one, I was like, "Well, that's, you know, positive." And then when you continue reading, you have another group saying, you know, "Just don't do it."
But I heard there was another one saying there's a lot of churches that have already gotten...
I haven't seen that.
I've heard, I've heard that. I've heard it. I haven't seen it, but I've heard somebody else say that. And it go, I don't know. It's a tough call, I mean, for me.
Okay.
Does the church have any funds to cover any portion of the...
We could. It's one of those things, we have some money. That means we don't have to, we wouldn't do something else that needs to be done too.
Would there be another ownership structure that might make sense? Should it have belonged to the town and be loaned to the church as needed or something like that, if we ever entertained that? Thinking about the use of ARPA funds.
We also do weddings too. We could have a money maker, have weddings on the farm.
I just, I mean, if, I don't think the town, I know, I don't want to be responsible for it.
Well, we could have the rope for it to be responsible.
That might be exactly, yeah, because I have the rope to take care of it.
Because we do it at the farm, sure.
I'd do it in Chalkville. For thirty years, I put that thing up. I don't know more.
I don't, first, I'm going to talk for myself. I really, um, I want to keep, you know, churches state separate. That's mine.
Good. I mean, you would want to open it up?
Yeah, yeah.
Like everybody else.
So for a discussion, do we need a motion?
Yeah. We're already in discussion, so now we can conduct the public review also there. Anybody got comments about it? Any thoughts on it?
How much did you see you were asking for?
Well, the whole thing is ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. That includes shipping.
Okay, we've been here before, so that's...
You said ninety?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand.
I hear your concern about separation of church and state. But I also see this as, as Maria said, something that everybody in the community can use. And that's what she's looking for in so many of the ARPA funding requests. And this is something that many people in the community would be taking advantage of because it's community events and you're willing to share it. So I have not read, reread, as Louis perhaps did, the regulations in terms of ARPA, and that might be worth doing. But I would be supportive of the request because I think it's, I think it's used by virtually everybody in the community over time.
Also, when we did have the pandemic, it became a necessary thing to increase outdoor space for schools and also down at the camp. So it's something there for emergencies and such.
You want to speak?
Yes, Louis Larson. I appreciate the separation of church and state position. And I too am generally, almost universally, in support of that. When I came to Dummerston in New England, I found that it wasn't as clear as it was in many parts of the country. And Dummerston being a good example of where the church and the town share space, both building and land and parking lot and meeting space. And I find it very healthy because both the church and, in this case, and the town are both very much community oriented. And I think we're maybe a little late to say we can do all these things jointly, cooperatively. But on the idea of financing a tent with federal money, it may, we have trouble with that. So I too support the request.
Yes.
Jay, you agree with that? I agree with Dale and Lou and both the separation of church and state and the fact of community. And I really would wish that maybe the church can look into another entity that could take it, the select board could give the money for, for ARPA, and whether it's the Grange or Green Mountain Camp or whatever, to take it on and have it. Because I see where it's necessary. And I've seen it at school, and I've come to Apple Pie fifty-something years or whatever. So I think something else should be able to work out.
Paul.
Paul, there we go. I concur with the arguments that have been made over here. And I like Alex's idea of perhaps the town buying it. But maybe the town could buy it and rent it to the church for a buck, and then the church would have the responsibility of taking care of it. And I was just thinking, you know, it's a way for the town to show its support for all the community activities. And the town is intertwined with the church. I mean, the basement of the church is a town hall. And so here we are. The foundation of the church is the town of Dummerston. So both in a liberal sense, but in a figuratively sense, the church does a great deal for the community. And I would support the town trying to figure out a way to make this happen.
Thank you.
I agree with some of what you said, Paul. And that is, maybe for a dollar, it could be rented out. That would skirt the issue. But to rely on that the town and the church are one and the same, well, the Church of England did that too. That's a long time ago, and that's one of the reasons we have separation of church and state. So it is a little bit dicey. But I would like to see the money go to get the tent.
Thank you.
Charlie. I'd just like to say that the, since the legal town, what's the word? Meeting place is in the basement of the church, we don't subsidize the church in any way except for what we pay for water. And yet, we have, we use their basement whenever we have it, you know, voting in town meetings and stuff like, well, not town meetings, but voting.
Wait, what's, I don't know the origin of that arrangement.
The water?
Not the, the town hall is the meeting house.
The town hall. I don't, I don't know what it...
It's New England history. Towns were founded with meeting houses. Which were congregational churches.
I asked the same thing, and Lori explained it beautifully, and it made perfect sense. So she has the answer to your question that I can't remember.
That's it.
There she is.
Wasn't it when you, or the previous church burned, I believe, and they wanted to build on that property? The town said, "Yes, we'll give you that property to build on as long as we can have the town hall in the basement of the church." That's my understanding.
Bingo. That's what you told me a number of years ago.
Well, it has to do with the founding of towns in New England. Each New England town, before it even became a town, had to have an established meeting house, an established church.
Meeting house or church?
Same, it's the same thing.
One and the same.
Yeah. There was no separation in those days. And they were, so that's why you see throughout New England, every, not every town, but because a lot of them are those, but that's why you see congregational church in every town. Those original meeting houses.
The original one was on the park. Feel like a Latin school.
How much, I guess, how much meeting time when you place an order for the numbers? Obviously, you want it before the Apple Pie Festival in October.
That's all we're looking for.
Right. So that still gives us some time, maybe to look back into the BLCT and the ARPA rules, what the regulations mean or not.
And I, and like I said, Katie, it was Katie's letter. I was all for doing it with what she had written. And I got to find out, I went back to try to find that email that was sent out, the other one, to find out who and why they would say. But they really said, "Just don't do it. Just separate it." Because I think it's, I think it's a good thing. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a great thing. But I just, I don't feel comfortable doing it as the church with the information I have right now. If something changes and we can find somebody, I mean, you check with the community center. There's, you know, Grange, there's different things. I don't know if they want it back. They need, they...
They had the same, the problem was, what they had written is they couldn't get enough help to put the tent up. With the one we had, being that much bigger, it took a lot of manpower to put it up. I had to take it back. It was a good fundraiser for the fire department for a number of years, but we had a lot, in the beginning, we had a lot of fire damage. We actually had two different groups. And boy, they had a lot of money.
And but then again, they may be willing to do it and lease it to you for the dollar. And I mean, it's something that we can look into. But I think Maria's, at this point, I mean, I'm just taking a consensus of what I've heard at the table. I don't want to make a motion to do it, you know, at this point.
Okay.
But I think if we can look into it, maybe you look into it.
Will you look into it?
Or Andrew?
I'd appreciate that. I think, I'm sorry.
And it wouldn't hurt for you guys to look into it too. Again, you know, people on the fire department still. And, you know, we can all make an effort to see what we can do.
I just think we probably need to make a decision sometime around the fifteenth of August at the latest, because I think we're going to need a month to, it's coming along. I mean, they seem, they seem very eager to help us. So it's just a matter of getting everything secure.
We could see if they're even more eager and throw the twenty percent higher.
Well, I was just going to add something else. I mean, ARPA funds have gone to the community center. They've gone to the Grange. They've gone to the Historical Society. They've gone to the fire department. So it seems to me that one of these organizations would be able to take the funds and lease it. You know, I'm not saying the Historical Society would do that because it's got to be, it's got to be a whole wealth. There's one, two, three of them, and they're almost a four. You know, but, and not, I don't think they want to own it. But, or be in the leasing business. But there are organizations, and I think the church, if you, if you talk to different people, you might come up with something that would work.
Okay, and what about the discussion topics?
Thank you very much.
How about some agenda for the next meeting? Got one? I'll get in touch with the LCT.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment for an item that's not on the agenda? Louis Larson.
Louis Larson. In the next hour, we will be having a redo of a town meeting that the discussion started in May. And during that meeting, there were lots of questions, most of which were directed at the fire department, financial questions. And it was awkward for many citizens, I think. Because I think everyone in the room supports the volunteer fire department and the work that they do to protect our lives and our property. So my comment tonight in this meeting to the select board is that a lot of the discussion that took place was financial issues on the expenditure of town funds. A fairly large amount of town funds, given everything. And I wish that on these kinds of issues, there would be more advanced work by the select board to search out those discussion items and get better information. And rather than simply putting it on a town meeting agenda for a up or down vote, as happened in March. That doesn't give a chance for the select board to explain or even advocates or opponents of a article to discuss and for citizens to weigh the pros and cons of a major expenditure. So I've watched you very responsibly look into these ARPA funding requests, ask questions, get information, and make tough decisions. And I wish that there had been more of that done in the case of big decisions like the fire question. And I hope you will in the future.
Louis, I just want to ask, have you ever received what was promised from the last, I know you haven't earlier, but the budget and financial information that was promised by the fire department a month ago? Did you ever receive it?
I would just like to say we were never promised anything, Jody. They said they would bring it back to their, the fire department and let them make the decision on it. They never said that they were going to do it. They sat right there and said that it was going, you know, if their, if their, if their fire department did not want to give it, they weren't going to force them to do it. I know that it sounded at first like they were going to do it. And then I think it was their treasurer spoke up and said that that all depended on the fire department agreeing to it. So I'm taking it as though the fire department did not agree upon it. If you watch back, that's what that...
I did watch, I watched the ABC TV. And it has, it was said that they would release the budget, plan to release it next month, and release info will be coming. And I can give you the minutes of the minutes. So it was certainly my idea that this was going to be done.
And I agree with you all the way up until the point when the treasurer spoke up and said that that may not happen depending on what the fire department decided. Because they weren't, they were only a few people and they were not going to decide for the whole fire department.
Right, I think it was they, they were going to go back to their org.
Right, and ask them for permission because they couldn't do it themselves. So I agree with everything you said up until that very last little thing.
So they did agree that to make the, their tent, what's it, nine ninety?
Nine ninety.
Long profit, which is available, you know, public record anyway.
Yes, Paul.
Well, there we go. Given what you've just said, does the select board have a position about the upcoming meeting, given that select board is much in the dark of the citizenry?
I think we all have our own. We haven't discussed, I haven't discussed it with any other board members as a board. I do have my own feelings on it. And one of them is, I know that when we have a $200 request, we ask for financials for that. So take that as you will. That's my feeling on it. And one of them is, I know that when we have a $200 request, we ask for financials for that. So take that as you will. That's my feeling on it.
Yeah, one of the strong senses I got at our previous meeting was the, the benefit of capital budgeting for the Fire Department expenditures. And I planned to bring that up at our, you know, budget discussions. I think for many reasons that were expressed at our last meeting, that makes a lot of sense. So that we were not paying, casting interest cards, we set money aside each year for expected, you know, expenditures that are gonna come up in five years or 10 years. So I think that's a, a really valuable outcome that came from that summit meeting.
On the fire question of the Fire Department's position on sharing the financials, and I don't know this, but my understanding is that this is not a new issue, and that it goes back, um, at least a couple of years, where the town has asked for financial information from the Fire Department, and it hasn't been forthcoming. And it should be.
Yes, I do remember one year when we thought that information would be... Be the wolves?
Yeah, uh, having been a fireman many years, it's paranormal. Uh, that many years ago, when that Fire Department was formed, they were a separate company or group of men. And they formed that with the bylaws were written, and it's so stated that they would, would not give their financial conditions to anyone other than the firemen. And the reason for that was because they did not get one penny from the town in their early years, many years. And so that's why they're saying they don't have to. But it is in their bylaws, I know, because I was a fireman more than sixty years ago there.
In recent years, they've got over $800,000 from the town so far.
Yeah.
Time, times change.
I know.
Yes, Gene?
I, Gene, no, I would like to say that my twenty-one years as being an auditor, that I brought this information to the select board saying any monies that are given from the town to any organizations should have, the select board should ask them for their financial statements. That never happened, never, ever happened. So I want that to put in records.
Um, I can say that that's not true, because I asked them for it. Now, we were giving it.
No, obviously, as an auditor.
Well, what I'm saying is, it was asked for and it was not given. So the select board has in the past asked for it and it was not given to them. So the select board has tried, at least when I was on the select board, it had been tried to get it, and it was not given.
Yeah, there was at least one year when we didn't get it.
One, one year we did.
Can I ask who was the Church?
Yes.
I belonged to the Fire Department years ago, and the Fire Department finances are managed by a board trustees. And to get financial information, you don't request it from the chief, he can't give that out, that you'd have to request that from the board of trustees. And that may be where some of this issue is rising. But I do agree that the select board here should receive financial statements from the, from the Fire Department.
Is the Fire Department a 501(c)(3) organization? So they're required to file a 1099 with the IRS, which would give us information, that wouldn't be a year or so old. I agree that, um, that there should be more transparency and that the documents should be part of the everyday decision-making, but, um, the...
And do you mean a 990?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, thanks.
Yeah, they did provide a 990, it's on their website for the 2021 fiscal year.
Okay.
I've got a couple other things, very briefly, besides the Fire Department. But I think you're hearing from everybody that before the next budget year, because the town gives also at least $60,000 a year to the Fire Department, that in the next budget session, I think they should be requesting information and with a good timeline, so that they can get their board of trustee and whatever process they need to go through. A couple other things I have very quickly is, um, thank you to Bruce Berg and to Louis White for the new signs. I don't know if you've noticed the new signs at Town Office, for both the Town Office and Historical Society. Bruce Berg created them, and Louis White, I think, put them up today. So thank you very much. Um, I guess, uh, I guess that's the only other thing. Oh, and thank you very much, I think Maria probably did it along with, um, Charlotte's Help. It's getting the ARPA funds on the website and on your minutes. It shows everybody who has requested funds, what the status is, how much has been designated and committed, and how much is remaining. So take a look at it if you want to really see where all that money's going. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our other, um, we'll be able to talk about Fire Department in a funny way. Will the formers report?
So the IRS were, um, they looked into getting some repairs done to it. And so it was seventy-five hundred and one company to repair. So our roofing was fifteen thousand, seventy thirty, and it's two inches, and the suns, they didn't actually pick a price, they just said it's gonna be around sixteen. And then I guess there was some question whether, as far as the longevity of the roof and its work fixing, or if we should choose a nice place.
Right, the whole roof is gonna be replaced in a few years, can we wait and do it all at once and try to avoid this interim stuff?
So I did check with Bruce Berg again, and that's when they sent that, so I can leave an order or just kind of restate it. Um, and so I kind of agree with them, you know, either leave there, um, if it's a hundred and twenty to two hundred thousand dollar roof, um, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars, if that would gain us even five years to do, a couple thousand dollars in repairs per year, um, I think it's, as far as money, I think that's the better choice. The rest of the roof looks good, it's just the edge where the insulation dropped a bit. I, I talked with him also, and, you know, because I was interested, in his email, he was saying, uh, he was a little vague about, you know, the expected lifespan of the rest of the roof. And he was saying, well, maybe five years, maybe 10 years, hard to tell, but, um, he said, definitely the edge needs to be addressed now, because it's, the wood underneath is rotting. Uh, and he said the chimney, water's getting through the chimney, uh, that the chimney's falling apart, and some water's getting in, and he's concerned about, uh, the structural members around the chimney also rotting. It's on steel there. So I don't think anything's gonna pop there. Um, but the insulation underneath the membrane is getting soft right now, so that would be our next step after this. I don't think we're gonna be able to get any, um, amazing, you know, if we want to do the, the fix up the edge. I would suggest, um, the chimney, put it on the list for next year, you know, um, getting the top of the chimney to refill, to flash. Um, it's not as, well, I, I wouldn't call it terrible, as far as it's, it looks, it's plenty structural, it's not like it's falling down. Um, and I'm not a chimney expert, but I think it can be fixed up without too much of a cost.
Yep. I asked them what, to give a ballpark, what would place the whole roof?
Yeah.
Just so we'd have that information.
That's good.
And have to know how to do it.
Yeah, he never got back to me on that question. I asked them, so one company that I asked originally was, or asked them all, he kind measured it up, and, and he was saying that if they did the whole roof, they, um, I guess co-roof is like maybe six inches of insulation in the, underneath the membrane, instead of the four. Um, so that's why he was thinking it was gonna be more expensive going after the two, because if you add more insulation, you have all the trim boards around the outside that have to be raised up, um, and it's more a project. Um, I can just think, you know, seventy-five hundred to, you know, ten thousand, somewhere in that effect. Um, and if it gets us six years, um, so, you know, it's a pretty good deal.
Lee, what's your sense of, you know, if we go this route of putting the seventy-five hundred or whatever in repairs? I've done enough work on older buildings to know that once you get in there, you start pulling off a sill plate or a top plate, you see extending rot and kind of keeps growing. What's your sense of how likely that is, that we'll get in there and then have to keep coming back to get more money to do this with?
Right, I don't believe there's gonna be that issue because of, um, it's steel.
The metal?
Yeah. Um, and that spot around the chimney, and they were putting underneath that insulation, um, was the only saw, you know, where it, where it, the rest is just right along the edge of the roof, and it's actually, like the old one, so it's, um, and that, to me, it didn't look like it was pressure-treated when it was put on, and they didn't think it was either. And they would of course put pressure-treated or, or, um, PBC.
So what did your, what did they give you for, for the whole roof, the price for the whole roof?
Uh, well, they did that one sixty to two hundred.
Oh, they were the one sixty?
Yes. But that was just standing on the roof, we had its measurements, we came up with it, um, type of thing.
It wasn't a quote?
Right, right. It was just a, you know, how much do we need to put in our capital fund in ten years? Pretty much. Um, but, uh, the one company also said that that can all be B C'd, you don't see anything wrong with the rest of the cover. Um, so, you know, it might be a bigger repair, but, um, it's still gonna have to cover that, that cover stack.
Do you know if it's E P D M or T P O or P B C?
I wouldn't know. No, but anytime anyone wants to take it.
I'd like to see what the real cost is to replace the roof, as opposed to the, I would be nervous that a seventy-five hundred dollar would just be a Band-Aid when we have ARPA funds now that we could potentially use to replace the roof.
And if we could do that in about four years, no, three years now, because we have to use it by twenty-six, correct?
Right, it has to be allocated by the end of twenty-four and spent by twenty-six. And then if you're, if the Band-Aid's only gonna gain us five years, then a couple of years after we've spent all our ARPA money, we're going back to the taxpayers through the capital fund to ask for potentially $200,000, when we could have ARPA funds cover it now and not have to go back to the taxpayers.
The repairs, the structural repairs that they would do on this edge would still be better.
Right, sort of, right. It's all worth it.
Yeah, I, I just, when I, when I go with the numbers, the, it's, it's just, um, if you're figuring even at, you know, a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty thousand for a thirty-year roof, um, you know, you've got so much per year, and seventy-five hundred dollars is, um, is pretty good for ten years, when it comes down to, you know, product. Um, that's all I was doing. Would, is it gonna hurt anything to do the whole roof? No, I mean, it's, it's, and, and hopefully it lasts thirty years, or, or at least twenty before it needed any repairs that year. So I guess...
Okay, should we try to get the whole, rather than just ballpark?
I think so.
Okay.
Right. So, um, well, is there anyone who wants to work on this as far as, is insulation required? I think that's gonna be a big thing when you do a total roof repair. Are, are we looking at going to code, which is, I used to want some numbers out there, like six inches, say. Um, or are we looking just to go with what we have on the roof?
Well, if you're looking at a complete total roof replacement, you would have to bring it up to code.
Well, I think so, but I'm not sure.
I would think you would have to bring it up to code. I wouldn't think that a roofing company would bid it without bringing it to code.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So you, so we want a couple, both three prices then?
Sure.
And I think the energy committee would be glad to weigh in on that and give some advice.
Okay.
So let's walk our route, bro, sheet metal. Jenkwood's didn't really give a...
Right, they didn't give a price because they didn't do a copy compared to the other two.
So at least get those two.
Okay. All right, um, if we're gonna use our, we have to get, we have to get three?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Yep. Okay, yeah, we'll come up with three. If anyone has an idea, we'll come up with four or five. Okay?
Okay, so we'll put that on hold?
Yep.
All right. What else is on your list?
All right, um, for speeding, I really, I think it was email or something.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we have a letter about speeding through the center of town, and, uh, people have been noticing an increase of traffic with the work on Route Thirty. I called the sheriff's department asking about having more coverage around here, and they told me that, gee, they used up all our contracted hours sometime in May, so that's why we weren't having any patrol, which was news to me. Um, so, uh, they said they would put a speed cart here, uh, and start, you know, uh, the next fiscal year a week early, so, but...
I did touch base with, um, about the area, and they were gonna have a, I don't know what you wanna call it, their traffic duty car, the one who just sits there pretty much like it's going, or, um, watching traffic, just trying to get them to slow down a little bit. Um, I did tell them that, you know, it wasn't a verbal, you know, sitting there all the time, they were saying, they said, don't want any of that, um, said stop by at different times. And then, of course, the caving up moved to the, tomorrow.
Wait, when is it?
Uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
And then caving, hopefully Friday, and finishing up just after four.
Lewis Johnson, those of us who live on Middle Road and East West Road are acutely aware of the additional... Most of us who live on Middle Road and East West Road are acutely aware of the additional traffic and the speed of the traffic as a result of the Route Thirty repairs. And I would think that, um, two things. One, that it would be good while that traffic increase is going on to get some speed counts, uh, speed and traffic volume counts. And I assume Wyndham Regional can still help with that. The other thing I'm thinking is that maybe there's opportunity for some discussion with the State Transportation Department on sharing some of the burden to the town of Dummerston because of that additional traffic when it comes time for paving or striping, lining or whatever.
Would you ask Lee to repeat what he said about the hours for the milling and paving the next two days? Because I think that's going to affect a lot of people that may not be aware of the traffic.
Okay, that would be as of right now, if they don't get rained out again today in Fitzwilliam, they will be here tomorrow to mill. They will shim on Friday. And then after the fourth, they'll put the top plate on.
This is on East West Road?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
Okay, so that Romans River is still trying to get track coming. It's L M E at, um, Montegoat. I don't know if they're that keen when I just told them they're going to be. But they were going to try to fit it in or give us a price when it was down. And share with us. They did say it's very unusual for anything under like forty-seven miles an hour in Romans River. I guess they just thought.
Also with the traffic, it's probably going to be four or five.
Um, and then back grants, that's what we've been spending most of our time on. And we went out to Black Mountain Road to Dupont Farm Road on the north. So, you know, we're on Dupont Farm Road right now and next week. And then we'll be moving to Kipman Road. And that's Grant Lane, still on the chin, grass on the hill. Trying to get the water cleaner that goes into this.
Okay. Any other questions for Lee? Okay. The Department of Gravel, San, no, it's a sand pit now. The price we pay is based on the Consumer Price Index. The adjustment made July first. And there is, let's see, it's been recalculated. I guess we paid three dollars and twenty-three cents secured yard. And with the adjustment, it's like we have forty-six percent way decrease.
See?
Yes.
I'd just like to add that that's a fourteen percent cost of living increase from November twenty, twenty-two, November twenty-twenty-two.
And Lee, how many yards can you take out and stuff?
Up usually around four thousand to four thousand five hundred.
Wow.
I'll make a motion that we assign a, 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 an increase for the carpet repair day.
All right, also your favor. Well, let's see, I don't know if we're going to be able to get through the rest of our agenda before this meeting starts. I was saying, I don't think we'll be able to get through the rest of our meeting before we have to recess at the beginning of the town. Yep. Let's see. Is there anything under correspondence for information you'd like to discuss? There's that, uh, the water, the flood resilient community spot. And I was thinking, uh, if numbers are okay, I just get, I think I have to see if that might be something where we might get some advice or help with the slab hollow area. So I could just make our inventory.
Great, okay, great.
So, hold on. Under correspondence for discussion and or action, we don't have any update from the community center regarding the passive report. And, uh, let's see. Do you have enough time for the financial management report from the treasurer? Did you all see that? It's pretty straight forward. This is just a checklist of best practices, I guess.
Yes.
Just need to sign this. Make the motion that we sign that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yes.
I'll make the motion that we assess the meeting.
Second, okay. All those in favor? All right, aye. So, we'll turn this over to our town moderator.
We're going to get started. Good evening. I'm Cindy Jerome. It's my privilege to serve as your town moderator. The Dummerston Special Town Meeting is hereby called to order. Do let me know if you can't hear me. We have one article to consider tonight. In doing so, let us remember that as we deliberate, we advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. I'll say that at the last informational meeting, I think we all did a good job at that. Thanks for that. If we can have quiet in the entry, thank you. Our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. I think we do really well with that, too. In order to speak at town meeting, you must be a registered Dummerston voter. We can make exceptions with the permission of the body. We do not have G A R T with us this time. It came from the fire truck manufacturer. He was given permission to speak last time. If you, well, we'll get to that later here. You must also be a Dummerston voter to vote this evening. Robbins Rules of Order, government town meeting. To speak, raise your hand. When I call on you, state your name. We have no microphone, so that's right. And speak loud enough for everyone to hear, and if I think they can, I will repeat the question. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. Is the Board of Civil Authority prepared to count a division of the House or to count paper ballots? Got that here? I like it. And you nod. My job is to help you, the voters accomplish your will. If you're not sure how to do something, ask me. I'm a little rusty. It's been a while since we've had an official town meeting, but I've got my notes. So now we begin. There are Dummerston citizens attending who know a lot about this issue. I understand Dan can speak to a question I'm sure some of you have for the fire department. They may answer a question in a neutral matter, manner, and they may speak as many times as they want. Otherwise, you may speak once to the article. You may only speak a second time if no one else wishes to speak for the first time. Okay. So, the article that is being considered today. Shall the voters approve up to one hundred thousand dollars in addition to the five hundred thousand dollars approved by Australian ballot on March seventh to complete the purchase and financing of a new fire truck? Is there a motion? Oh, oh. Thank you, Ruth. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ruth. I should have had you stand and give your names.
Ruth Bart.
Thank you, Ruth.
Priscilla Adler.
Priscilla may be second. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the voters approve up to one hundred thousand dollars in addition to the five hundred thousand dollars approved by Australian ballot on March seventh to complete the purchase and financing of a new fire truck. We are open for debate. Who has a question or comment?
I request we have a paper ballot.
Okay. Harold, could you stand and state your name?
Harold, no. I request a paper ballot.
All right. I'll look at my notes. I believe we need, Chuck, here you, yeah. Seven, yes. Paper ballot can be called by seven. Normally, Harold, we make that motion after we've had discussion and we're ready to vote. But I will take it under advisement now. And when discussion is concluded, I'll see if we have the seven votes to do what you're requesting. Okay? All right. Questions about the article on the floor?
I was out of the country.
Would you stand and state your?
I was out of the, I'm Paul Adler. I was out of the country at the time. I would like to know what is the additional, uh, hundred thousand dollar cost?
Four.
Four.
Okay. Dan, is that something you're prepared to answer?
Uh, yeah, I, I will, yes.
Would you say?
My name is Dan Verliver. I'm a Dummerston resident and also a member of the fire department. I'm sort of speaking on behalf of our treasurer who's not just a resident and also not a Dummerston resident. The five hundred thousand dollars that we motioned and voted on as a town back at our last town meeting was the number that we had for the vote for our fire truck from the manufacturer. We then brought, you know, we had provided our estimate that we got from our manufacturer to the select board as part of their budgeting process. They put that figure on the warrant articles or whatever, and then that's what we voted on. As time went on, we don't secure and lock in pricing until the day we sign our agreement to buy the fire trucks. Prices continued to rise. Also, it became aware that there was, I'll call it, a lack of communication or misunderstanding between the fire department and the town, but how exactly the fire truck would be paid for. So, one portion of the additional funding is the increase in cost. Another portion is costs associated with financing the vehicle as opposed to its purchase.
Dan, I'm going to say what I remembered from the informational meeting, which I think is a little bit different. And correct me if I'm wrong. As I recall, it was reported at the informational meeting that the day after the vote was taken on town meeting day, knowing we didn't get to have a town meeting, that the fire department called to place the order and was told at that time that because of inflation and supply chain issues, the price had gone up quite a bit. And it was with delivery, et cetera, going to be a good bit beyond the five hundred thousand that had been approved. Does that sound right? Okay.
With the financing.
With the financing, yes. So that's your answer, Paul?
Yep.
Okay. Who else?
I agree with that.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, Aaron.
Aaron there, well, since the price of the truck was constantly moving, I'd like to know if we signed tomorrow, what is the cost of the fire truck?
As a matter of fact, the fire truck has actually gone up another thirteen thousand since the last meeting that we had. If I correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We received that information. It's another thirteen thousand, so it's over five hundred.
Ahead of five hundred thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
The, the price of the truck today, and hopefully tomorrow, is five hundred thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
And that's with financing?
No, no.
No.
That's why we're asking. That's why the orders are being asked.
You didn't want to come up with the hundred because there's financing. All right. Answer the questionnaire?
Uh, yes.
Okay. We, it sounds like someone didn't hear the answer. The answer is five hundred thousand, one hundred and forty-eight with, and then there's financing on top of that, and that number was not stated.
That number is unknown because we don't finance it until it's delivered, which is two years from now.
Did everyone hear Charlotte's response? Charlotte is our town treasurer. Okay. Rick?
Rick Coolman. Price, if I get the vote tonight, if it's a yes, if I get it into tariff by midnight, I got price locked in.
And he's waiting for your call.
Call him. As long as I come before midnight tonight, it's counted.
Ruth is our fire chief, so he can answer neutrally as many times as he wants. All right. Aaron, I saw your hand again, but you can't speak a second time until everybody else has spoken once who wishes to. Are there other questions, concerns? Jody?
Jody Normandow. At the end of the last meeting, or during the very, even the beginning of the last meeting, the firemen, Rick, was going to go to the members of the, um, fire department and get a budget and financials for us before this next meeting. Have they been given to the select board yet?
Yeah.
Didn't we, Dan, sign to answer that question?
Yeah, we, we took that up at our very next apartment business meeting and voted unanimously to share our finances. We then discussed what's the best vehicle for that. We operate with QuickBooks Online. You know, we're a small volunteer position. Our books are not particularly savvy. So what we've shared and is currently on our website, you can go and check it out if you want to scroll through PDFs, is our most recent tax file. That was prepared by our accountant. So we give over full access for QuickBooks. They comb through our transactions and all our expenses and our income. They prepare a tax file to file it. It's a pretty long document. It's like twenty-something pages. It's called a nine ninety for nonprofits. About halfway down on page eleven or twelve, there are, uh, all of our expenses. We felt like that was a good representation of the picture of the financial condition of a fire department. With sort of the biggest story being clear that we take in all of X in total fundraising and contributions from the town outside of fire trucks. The cash contribution, you guys have a good chance. And then our top five line items, uh, dispatching fee is thirty-something thousand dollars, our insurance, uh, vehicle maintenance and, uh, we call occupancy expenses. That line is what does it cost us to keep the lights and eat on in both fire stations? Those, those four or five line items add up to significantly greater than the X that we earn from town contribution and fundraising. And so our picture to you there is really that our operating expenses are not covered in full by a forecastable revenue. Which we, we, every year, open our books planning to operate at a deficit. We hardly keep a capital budget as a result of that. We replace some personal equipment out of that. But that's kind of the story and you can see all that in our accounts.
So the nine ninety has been provided to the select board. So, the 990 has been provided to the select board, and it is also on your website for those who wish to make that.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Dan?
Steve Tavella, Westhammersden. Mine is not a question, just a comment to provide further information to the people sitting here about budgets and 990s. They are absolutely not the same. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit and have been working in the nonprofit field for over 30 years and have been working with budgets. I was also a contracting officer for the State Department in Afghanistan. So, I oversaw contracts and approved or disapproved grants and contracts. I will tell you that a 990 is absolutely not a budget. What concerns me about what was just stated was the term or the statement, "Our budget is not absolute." I'm currently the director of a nonprofit, and we use QuickBooks. And it's easy. And you can do line by line. A lot of time was given between the last meeting and this meeting with a request that was made to provide a budget with just a few lines. I could have whipped up a spreadsheet and provided a printout of my organization's budget, which is pretty simple, but I probably has 50 to 75 line items. Could have done it in a snap. I'm really concerned of why we are not getting a budget. And to me, well, it's very concerning. A 990 is not a budget.
So, I can't... Yes?
So, my question about the finances, if you say that the yearly expenses exceed the revenue, that does not tell us what money you had on hand when the year started. So, the question is not just what you spend and took in within the year, or what you start the year with, whether it's a capital account, operating account. I'm the treasurer of the historical society. We keep multiple types of financials to provide all my members with all that information. So, did you start with zero?
I'm sorry, you can't interrogate each other. What do you ask?
I said, did they... They said their expenses exceeded the revenue. The question was, did they start with zero, like, at the beginning of the year?
Is that a question, make your answer, Dan?
I can answer it non-specifically. I attend all of our monthly department meetings that I know that our balance has never been zero in our books in the years that I've been a member of the department. I'll also say, I'm not the treasurer, so I don't keep those books in. I think if we were to discuss it again, I would imagine that we'd have the same departmental vote to share our QuickBooks exports as budgets. In our discussion, we felt our tax filing would be a sort of the council-prepared reading of our books that we thought was valuable to you. Sounds like that's not. So, I hear that as well. But that's not something we can hand out to the world today.
Um, I saw another hand similar, someone who had not yet spoken. Lou?
Lou Sorensen. At the prior meeting, I asked the Fire Department if what their Plan B was if the additional funding was not approved. And the response was, "I guess we'll have to go back to the drawing boards." At the end of the meeting, I asked that at this follow-up meeting, they have prepared a better answer to that of what the various options are. And I can visualize there are some, but I don't know because I don't know what the considerations might be or what the resources might be. So, that's my question again tonight, and I'd like to ask, do a follow-up question or comment depending on their response. That's part of my initial question.
Why don't you ask that now, rather than... You probably need to ask.
Well, like I say, I don't know what their response might be. I do think that one is owed to the townspeople for the kind of money that we're talking about, both the $100,000 and the $500,000 and the $13,000 or whatever the next number will be. And there's gotta be options. A lesser fire truck, a used fire truck, a trade-in value of the fire truck, no fire truck, and returning the money for the town reauthorization for whatever at a future town meeting, and on and on and on. I can go on in theory.
I got your question.
But I want their answer.
Yes, I understand. Anyone in the Fire Department can answer a question about what Plan B is if the fire truck additional funding is not approved tonight? Would that be you, Rick?
Yep. Rick Boulman. Well, truthfully, we didn't have Plan B because we don't have money to get the truck out and out. We'll just have to see what happens if it goes along. We've got a truck right now that pump, so we'll just have to skip along and see where we go from there. So, I don't have a better answer for you, but we didn't really have a conversation with Plan B. So, I'll say that.
All right. Yes?
He said you had a truck that didn't want to move.
No, they can't.
Oh, they didn't want to, okay.
I see a hand from another firefighter in the back.
Yes, Larry Craft, Dallas, Nevada, the secretary. I'd also like to piggyback on Rick and just remind all of you that we all have two... Some of us have one, two full-time jobs besides the Fire Department, so getting together and coming up with a decision at one can sometimes be a bit of a challenge.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Steve?
Uh, Steve, good job. So, you want, for Plan B, you wouldn't be, you know, reaching into New York or, you know, funds that you have. The town's already voted $500,000 for a new truck, so that's a done deal. So, for Plan B, you'd have $500,000 to work with.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Dale?
Dale Sorensen. Just a question in terms of the plan for the truck that we'll be selling. Where do the funds go? Does that go back into the town?
It's back.
To the town?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any estimates on what you might give to them?
Depends on what they're committing. Test it out, and then test to see where the price of the truck could go to $25,000. That's all.
So, the trade-in dollars come back to the town?
Did you say how much?
Did you... Did I hear you say $25,000?
It could have been $5,000. I'm not sure yet. It's a lot of time.
It goes high, $25,000. I see someone who hasn't raised their hand yet there. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dave Evans, Westhammersden resident. I'm excited to buy a fire truck tonight, or not. Is there a number per taxpayer that we've talked about? You know, $26,000 a person, $0.52 per person. Like, I've never heard anybody say it's gonna be around $100 bucks per person. And I just wanted to see if we could get a number there and also to say, it sounds like there's a lot of unresolved stuff about finances and relationship and communication channels. None of it's rocket science. It just needs to happen. But I don't want to wait another $15,000 worth of truck to figure that stuff out. That's why I love the idea of voting for it tonight. And if it's a number like $100, we can rouse about that and have our own personal reactions, but we're not, you know, losing another $15,000 plus financing cost for the next one, so... Thanks.
So, I'll look at Charlotte, and she shook her head, I suppose.
Well, we don't have our grant list yet. I mean, there are so many factors that go into... I can't do it right here.
Yeah. So, I'm sure you have any... Someone hasn't spoken yet. Paul?
Paul, without... Rick, you can repair a truck, a pump that doesn't pump?
It will not wrap.
I'm sorry?
Will not wrap water. Pop water out.
So, there must be other things wrong with the truck besides that. It would be interesting to know, what is the cost to cure? What's wrong with that truck? In other words, what do you have to do to rebuild the pumps? Or, you know, you know more about this than what any of us do. You know, what's the cost to make the truck functional, usable for another five years, 10 years, in your estimation? Or has that been ascertained?
It hasn't been ascertained. With that kind of truck style, the sale will be effective. People get the pump out, so you almost have to pull the hose off the truck. The body's going, the friggin' is going. So, you're almost looking at a whole truck. So, $19,990, right by there.
Okay, there's Danny's hand, who hasn't spoken yet. Danny, do you want to... Please stand and state your name.
Dennis Tier. And I'm... Why am I standing up? Just to add an interesting perspective, I lettered a lot of fire trucks. And so, what happens with some of those fire trucks that ran new? What happened with our engine four? It was sold to Townsend, and I relettered it. And I understand that's their front-line truck. And so, another interesting situation was with Halifax. They bought a truck from New York and had me reletter it. It was a Mack, and it was... I think they paid $50,000 for that truck, and they did what they needed to do to it. And so, I've done some other trucks that I think provide just some food for thought for other options in terms of what other people are doing. And I think I had mentioned somebody in a discussion the other day. One of the concerns I have at this time is that I have a friend that's a professional truck driver, and he's been in the business 40 years. And his recommendation right now is not to buy a new truck because what happened is, we went down to a dealership to move a truck, and there was about a one-acre pen, fenced-in pen. And we asked the mechanics there, "Well, what's that all about?" And all those trucks had a number up in the windshield, and that was their repair number, and they're all waiting for computer work. And you'll see trucks by the side of the road that the hoods are flipped open. I was driving one to California, and the truck just stopped. You have to roll over the side of the road, and then you have to get somebody that is qualified to work on trucks to get you rolling again. And this person, he has an older truck. And the big thing with guys that are running trucks today that are in the business, a lot of them are going to precomputer. They want something precomputer because we aren't getting all the problems worked out of these computers on new trucks. And so, you'll hear story after story about, "Well, I can't get parts. This is not happening" because they're still working through these bugs on new trucks. And so, that's a concern I have. And it's not like I'm an alien to the Fire Department. I started in 1962, 10 years old, and my mother lettered some of our original trucks, and I've kind of come up with the whole thing. My uncle was the first cheater. I crawled around in the compartments on the truck we built in 1961. And I want the best for the department. But I think at this time, I'm concerned about these elements that I've mentioned. And I mentioned these other elements that I've experienced out in the field that other people are doing. And just to put out the idea that there are other options and other people are doing that. And so, with that said, just some additional input.
And Danny? Katie?
Captain Bornley, let her know as Katie Bur. There are a few things that come to my mind. We already approved this at town meeting, and then had the wake-up call, inflation, up the cost of $100,000. We were at a town meeting, and we gathered to discuss... We were going to vote, but then there was a glitch that prevented us from voting. And here we are now, called to vote. I appreciate the experience of Mr. Tier. I appreciate your experience. I think maybe we're comparing apples to oranges in this case. We had good discussions from... Is it the manufacturer, the representative of the manufacturer, Rick, last time? I certainly learned a lot of information about what if you do this? Well, then down on the drain it goes, whatever. So, I feel I'm not in the catbird seat to say, "I know better than the firefighters." And we already appreciated the fact that you're doing two jobs and then volunteering some of you. We certainly need your service and your bravery, and we are safer. And if it's $100, I sure would pay more than $100 to clean smoke from my house if there were some kind of a fire. I think I'm meeting a dead horse. What I want to say is, I'm in favor of our paying this extra. I just paid 30% more for something that I researched for two years. And I talked about this earlier, but I just finished paying it at 30%. It's inflation, it's the cost of supply chain, as you said. I don't think... I don't think we can get around it. I mean, we can certainly be annoyed about it, but at $12.01, the truck is not there at the price that you were offered. So, I certainly support this, and I hope that we can vote soon.
And that?
My name is Jim Greenwood. I will seek Katie Dead Horse because she just preempted exactly what I was trying to say. We had a meeting, $500,000 approved for the truck. I think every issue that I've heard today could have been brought up before or during that meeting, but it's not brought up. I don't think anybody's questioning the truck, $100,000. So, certainly, it seems many questions, legitimate questions are being raised that the Fire Department might want to address for us down the road, transparency, budgets for 999s, things like that. But it seems to me we are simply here to say we're happy with the price, $500,000. Everybody knows what's going on with the world. Will we give another $100,000? I don't think anything that I heard today changes my mind on your original issue. Could somebody remind me what the vote was for the $500,000? Well, that was a separate... Is that separate? Did that get voted on separately?
Was that already voted on March 7th and passed?
And do you know by what... How much it was, or what the margin was? I don't know.
There was overwhelming support here.
Is there anyone else who has not yet spoken who would like to?
I have spoken.
You made a motion for a paper ballot, Harold.
That was the exception.
I think you did speak earlier, didn't you?
I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's right, you said...
I'm Priscilla Adler, and I just like to say, my husband was a volunteer firefighter for many, many years. And the town really reaped a benefit from that where we lived in Connecticut. And I can't thank these guys enough. And if we were to have a paid-for fire department, we would not be able to afford it. And I really, really don't mind paying an extra hundred to two hundred dollars a year to help save houses. We don't want seller favors. And I really am in favor of this.
Okay, I'm not.
Two things. For one thing, if we don't pay for the fire truck, we will be paying more in fire insurance costs. You have to have a good fire department, or your cost for fire insurance is going to go up. The other thing about, if we order a truck now, I appreciate what Dennis Tier says about computers and all of that. I don't want a car that's controlled by a computer. But what we're ordering now is not going to be the technology that was made yesterday. This is going to take two years before we get it. And it will be improved technology by then. And my understanding is that there are new regulations on trucks coming in within the next four or five years that are going to make trucks even more expensive.
Okay. Deb, you haven't spoken yet, go ahead.
Natalie Tier, if we have a fire truck that needs repair, and we're going to be spending buco bucks on a truck we aren't going to have for two years, what are we going to do in the interim?
Okay, so you know, the first one, mine's bad.
It's my understanding, the hundred thousand dollars is specified for financing the machine. Am I correct?
Yeah.
No.
The hundred thousand dollars question, that is to finance the machine, it's not to purchase the machine?
Sort of. I mean, the total cost exceeds five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, my question is, the request for that hundred thousand dollars was based on a machine at a certain cost. The cost of the machine has gone up. Are we asking for an adequate amount of money for the finance?
The answer to that question at this point, I believe, is yes. Up to only tonight, anyway. Now? That's right. Forgive me. We don't know the financing costs until we actually get the truck.
Until, yeah, until, but it's close to delivery.
And then we finance it and pay for it. We don't pay for it until then.
Correct. My point is, the request for a hundred thousand dollars was based on the assumption of cost for the truck. The truck has gone up. Does that mean we still have, that that hundred thousand dollars is adequate? Or do we need to increase that?
See?
Okay. Article states, asking the voters to vote on up to a hundred thousand dollars additional. So, if it's less than that, we don't spend it. The original article that we voted on in March asked for five hundred thousand dollars for the truck. The vote we got from the fire department when we made the budget was for a truck that cost about four hundred thirty thousand dollars. We asked for, you know, up to five hundred thousand dollars to cover what we thought the interest would be. I'm not only guessing it, what the interest would be. It's like we guess what diesel is going to cost in two years. So, we have a five, and then the next day after the vote, they went to order the truck, and it had increased to the extent that five hundred thousand dollars wasn't going to cover the total cost of the truck and interest. So, that's why we have the article to vote on whether we'll approve enough, up to a hundred thousand dollars in addition to that five hundred thousand. And we are making the assumption that that will be enough to cover any interest.
Thank you, Cindy. Jody?
Jody Normandot. And this is kind of goes way back to the very beginning, because we can't have a follow-up question. And Dan talked about the nine ninety being on the website and it being several pages. I only saw this one cover sheet on the website. So, you mentioned, he mentioned, I should talk to you, right? He mentioned that the other sheets had all the information about the income and expenses and where it went and all that other stuff. But I'd like to know where that is, because it wasn't, when I went on the website, I only found this top cover sheet.
I downloaded a PDF and sent it to the select board. I pulled it from our website. If you have a couple gave me, I'd be happy to.
So, the select board has those forty pages or something or other that you were talking about?
I think it's like nineteen.
Oh, only nineteen? Because all I could get was this one. All right. If I gave you my email, would you send it to me?
Yeah.
After the meeting? Thank you.
So, Dan, what I'm hearing from you is, you downloaded it from the website, an entire document to provide it to the select board, so you were able to access the whole thing on the website? Did I hear that right?
Yes, right.
Okay. Charlotte?
Oh, Louis, did you have something to add?
No, go ahead.
Okay, because we spent almost two hours, we've had a two-hour meeting on this, and another forty minutes, I'd like to move the question.
Second.
Okay, calling the question. Second, no debate. Two-thirds of you need to say, yes, we'll call the question, which means we cease debate, and we move ahead to voting. And then we'll talk about a paper ballot. So, we'll start with a voice vote. I'm calling the question. If you'd like to call the question and cease debate and move to voting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed to calling your question, because you want to continue debate, say no. That sounds unanimous to me. Okay. So, now we're back to Harold's suggestion of a paper ballot. Are there seven people in the room who would like a paper ballot? Yes, there are. So, everybody has their paper ballot? And we have containers, where do you want people? Got two aisles here. Do you want last names, eighty-three K members? On your ballot, your attention, please, mark yes if you approve the up to additional one hundred thousand dollars. Mark no if you do not. Leave your ballot whole and put it up here. Put it in either container, doesn't matter which one, because you've already been checked in. Don't give your ballot to anyone else, please. Your attention reads, the vote is forty-two in favor of the article thirty-one against. The article passes. I will let him take the motion to adjourn. Five more minutes, there are six. All in favor? Happy good evening.
All right, we're back in business. And let's see, we finish first one for the special handle action. New business, Arca Products.
DC, D B, high-level question of five thousand, five hundred dollars. We did a little discussion.
Well, they were going to do some more.
Yeah, I see that.
As I saw in the news today, there are two hundred twenty-nine million dollars just been allocated for Vermont for tighter activity. And so, I think that probably could have covered quite a lot. I'd like to see how far that goes, and if we still need some more. So, we'll table it. Table it, see. Till that, two hundred twenty-nine million. Highway replacement.
We go there.
Yeah. We've got quotes for the whole thing. Highway garage wiring. We need some wiring, does it need to go from the whole outside? The lightning? Yes. We are looking at that one. All right.
Oh, I thought we were looking into a rewire of the entire highway.
But it should be from the panel to the outside panel, is what we came up with. We have to get back to thinking.
So, that's, so we're still taping it, too?
Yes. All right. Let's see. The highway budget for the fiscal year that's just about to end is ten thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents over the budget.
Correct.
Charlotte, so.
Who gets the numbers again?
Nine.
Ten?
Ten thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. So, we have to figure out what to do. And one of the options is to use the Arca funds to cover that.
I would like to propose using Arca funds. I feel like we've given a lot of Arca money to organizations that do not serve every taxpayer in this town, and that this does serve every taxpayer in this town, to not carry this deficit or not have to take away from the surplus that we're carrying in.
Okay. So, our other options are to take from the surplus, which reduces the surplus.
Right.
And, let's see.
And reduces how much we take away from what we need to raise, so. I mean, the select board never wants to use any of our surplus to create a reserve fund, which, in reality, would solve this problem when we have a deficit, because they don't want to take money away from the taxpayers. If we don't use Arca funds, then we ultimately take money away from the taxpayers. So.
So, what line items created the over budget?
Well, Diesel did. That was fourteen thousand dollars over. There's not a lot of change from what I sent you last time. Wages were under what was allocated. The crushing was over, four thousand dollars, but that's been since last fall, so we know about that. Contract services was three thousand dollars over. Do you know why that was?
So, when you sent us this, when you sent us this financial, there was actually a two hundred and eleven dollar surplus. So, what came in since this to create the ten thousand dollar over?
Well, we had the lightning strike, that was twenty-five hundred dollars. We had, we've gone twenty thousand dollars over in repairs for vehicles. I don't know what it was when I sent it a month and a half ago.
Covid tractors, five, tobacco, another three.
Those came in today.
Is that count in this payroll out of this?
That's in there today.
So, the repairs that you're talking about were in these warrants?
Yes.
So, they are not in this financial that you sent us? Is that what you're saying?
What's the date of those financials? From last week?
Yeah.
So, they're not in that financial. I have a new financial right here, if you would like to see it. Or did I send it today? Can't remember, no question. There you go.
Do we know if the lightning strike is going to be covered by insurance?
It was not submitted, and it's already, so I don't think we can get insurance on coverage there.
It would have been fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, we have, that's a covered, that's a problem.
And none of these could have been numbers, when we got the original numbers from you, we actually had, it was tight, two hundred and eleven dollar surpluses in the lot.
Right.
None of these expenses could have been deferred to the next fiscal year, starting July first.
Well, yes, I could, but then we're taking away from next year's.
No, you can't, because we operate on a cash basis.
Right.
So, when it occurred, if you received invoice before the end of the year, we have to pay them.
Do you accept the comment or question? Louis, I agree with Charlotte. Certainly, it seems to make sense that the town have a reserve fund to meet unexpected needs. The purpose of the Arca funds, as I understood it, was to meet community needs during a time of high, very high need because of COVID and economy. And I'd much rather see you be upfront with what the cost of operation is on a year-to-year basis than have to dig into one-time special funds for operations, only to say, well, this year we don't have those one-time funds dip into, so now we're going to have a big increase. So, I prefer the pay-as-you-go and using special funds for special needs.
Yes, Paul?
Paul, I'm going to go. I guess my statement is going to be along the lines of Louis, but it seems to be Arca funds were for special projects, things in the community that are not ongoing expenses, things that would benefit. Now, Charlotte's point is that it would benefit the taxpayers by reducing the taxes. But my recollection is, some years back, the town meeting voted to, if we have a surplus in the highway department, that it was going to get put into, I don't know, either the structures fund or the special, or the bridge fund. Am I not remembering that correctly? No? Okay, well, then I must have dreamt. Okay, well, if that's not the case, I'm happy. But I was going to say, if we're doing that, we shouldn't be, if we run into a deficit, we shouldn't be taking, we shouldn't be asking special funds to take care of it. You know, we shouldn't be using money that was allocated to the town for improvements that are going to benefit the entire community. That's not an improvement, that's sort of projecting the budget.
So, you would take it on the surplus? So, you would cover this ten thousand, nine hundred, not, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars out of next year's surplus?
You know, you're the best at doing it. If I was on the board, I would say, yeah, put it off the list. Because the next year, you may not have as much, you may not have as much overtime in your budget, your overtime, and that's always, you know, you have to plug the, expand that number.
I believe, one of the things that we received is you have to pay, we have to pay it this year.
Yes.
Even if you have to take a loan, or, it's in, I think it's in the new business, or, it's in the new business folder, it's highlighted there. So, you have to do it this year, I believe.
I'm not sure if you're able to take out, or, I don't know what that's projected surplus is.
is in the general fund, but it's my recollection that you can transfer funds from the general fund to the highway funds, but you can't do vice versa. So you may be able to use a portion of any surplus to offset the highway deficit. Otherwise, I believe you need, which we had to do because of the capital fund several years ago, there has to be a separate line on this upcoming year's tax bill to pay for that amount of the deficit. So it's one way or the other unless we use our funds.
Is there surplus in the general fund?
There is, fifty-one thousand dollars. Fifty-one, four, one, seven, thirty-six cents.
So if we took the highway deficit out of that, then essentially the general fund surplus would then be down to forty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Slightly less. And then there would be no surplus carried forward, or no deficit carried forward. And you can't carry forward a deficit at all. So then, two years out, when we account for this, what would be a surplus, there will be no surplus.
There'll be nothing.
There would be nothing. I would think that would be a better route to go.
So a motion?
I'll make a motion that we use the general fund surplus to cover the highway fund deficit.
That was seconded.
Okay, discussion?
What's the downside to that? Anybody?
Well, it'd be ten thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars less than the cost that generally applied to reduce taxes.
My question was, what is the?
What's our carry?
What's the negative side of doing it that way? Taking it out of the general fund. Is there a negative to that?
That may not be the final number, though, because we may get an invoice in tomorrow or Friday that would have to be paid. But it's not going to be fifty-one thousand dollars.
Well, it could be, it could be forty sometimes.
But you all are going to point something.
Thoughts on that? I know you thought fairly strongly about.
Well, it was my understanding that Arca money was there, yes, for special projects, but it was also for the running of the town.
Yes.
That was my understanding from reading the details of the Arca funds. But this is a good alternative. Rather than having to have a line, set a line saying, oops, on the tax bill.
Any other discussion? All those in, well, let's see. Your motion would cover, was vague enough to, so it would cover any increases that came in.
Yes, I didn't get it done.
Okay, great. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right. There. Okay, let's see. Ah, okay, Green Mountain Conservancy has requested a letter of support for purchase of almost thirty acres of land that buds the currently. In the beginning of this discussion, I was managing my conflict with the head sir on the board of Green Mountain Conservancy.
I hope that you should tell me you don't want any money.
Well, something pretty accidental. It's covered a lot of bases.
Any other questions?
No. I guess my biggest thing is if we do approve this, are you going to give us a letter that you want us to sign instead of us writing?
I think the last time you chose to write the letter yourself without my permission, we did the whole year run. So if you wanted to do that, we're glad to do it. Mostly you chose to do that yourselves.
We can do it either way.
We have a guy that has conflict of interest.
How about at least a template?
Template, sure. Yes, and I can send you some that other people have sent. We originally sent one. I can send you that one.
Great, great. Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we write a letter of support for this land purchase for the Green Mountain Conservancy.
All set, okay, so we can have a discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm all set.
Charlie Maynor.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to write the letter?
I'm going to abstain. I say we'll abstain.
Okay, how about I'll write the letter?
That's me?
If you'd like.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And this is off the topic, but I so much appreciate your patience in meetings.
Who wants to sign end of fiscal year warrants? Let's try to draw a, I have a chance. I can do it if anybody else can.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Louis to sign end of year fiscal warrants.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
So I'll make a motion that we recess the meeting and convene a select control board.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, here we are. Where is, it's just one sheet. It's where we'll put the stock front. Let's see. Stock front, like, second slide. Outside assumption, and two of those, doesn't get the dates.
I think it's just in there, general.
Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion that we renew the stock front.
I'll second.
Okay, we need to stop that. All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn as a select control board and reconvene our committee.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, here we are on the select board again. Is there any other business?
I wanted to mention that I'm going to be out of town July fifteenth or twelve, mid-July meeting. Twelve?
Twelve.
Yes. So I'll be speaking at a conference in the conference. We're going to get one meeting. We have a plan on the board.
So we should have our member back for our next meeting. So, all right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.